Okay, we'll call the meeting to order tonight at 7:00 PM here at McAdavis Place. Good evening and welcome to the December 2023 regular council meeting for Eastern Charlotte Council. I'll look at this, at this point for adoption of the agenda tonight. I need a motion on the floor for that. Counselor Titt. Second by Counselor Lee. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And gone, that's passing unanimously. Three is disclosure of conflict of interest. Anybody who wants to disclose that, now's your opportunity. Four is adoption of minutes of previous council meetings. I'm looking for a motion for, I guess, November the 15th. Okay, I got, okay, sorry, I gotta look up. Counselor McKay. Second by Counselor Lee. Question or comment on the minutes of November the 15th? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing unanimously. November 21st, I need a motion for that one. Counselor Titt. Second by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing unanimously. Four C is November the 28th, special meeting of council. Looking for a motion to adopt those minutes. Counselor McQuarrie. Second by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. That's passing unanimously. December the 5th, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of December the 5th. Counselor McQuarrie. Second by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. December the 12th, closed-door meeting of council, looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of December the 12th. Counselor Lee. Second by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passing unanimously. December the 13th, special meeting of council, looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of December the 13th. Counselor McQuarrie. Second by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion? Oh, Counselor Dedrick.
Yeah, so this is for the public hearing for the draft bylaw EC-10, planning fee bylaw. There was one comment that we received from a resident, but there wasn't, I missed the meeting. What was it?
What was the comment?
Oh, yeah, it just says, "We received one comment from a resident," but it doesn't actually say what the comment was.
Yeah, we don't have it listed, what the actual comment was. Do you want some?
Do we know, do you know what they said? Because I think we're discussing this this evening, aren't we? Yes.
The comment was from President Green Hall.
Okay.
And I believe it was him thanking us for, first, thanking for being on the PRAC and something related to the PRAC. It wasn't really a comment on the actual fees.
Okay, so there was no comments on the, on the hearing?
Yeah.
All right.
He was there and he commented during the comment portion of the hearing, but, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Which meeting was that, December 12th or the 13th?
Thirteenth. Yes, 13th.
13th, we are, okay. So I need him, okay, we, that was question or comment. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing unanimously. That brings us to this December 20th. I need a motion to adopt those minutes. Deputy Mayor. Second by Counselor McKay. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passing unanimously. December the 27th, another meeting of council. I need a, I need a motion to adopt those minutes. Counselor Titt. Second by Counselor Lee. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. That's passing unanimously. Okay, five is business arising out of the minutes. I don't think there's anything there. Delegations or none. Department reports. General government report tonight. I'll go to Jason.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just general government report for the month of November. Finance, the finance team has completed work, completed work pertaining to the draft of the 2024 budget. Properties, two properties under dangerous unsightly bylaw were enforced over the last month with demolition taking place of two burnt-out homes, one in Penfield and one in Katniss. The arena work continues on upgrading it to the arena, slow working through upgrades to lighting and electrical, just mostly with vendors and contractors. Additional work slated over the next month includes lower level renovations in the downstairs recreation lobby, installation of the heat in the arena entrance, rain gunners on the side entrance, and exterior lighting upgrades at the back of the building. Three of the five, three of the five Day Adventure Center buildings were successfully sold, just awaiting their removal, and the remaining two buildings, the larger two buildings in the back will be open, are open to offers. And that's general government.
Okay. That brings us to the building and planning Southwest New Bunch, I don't think they're here tonight, so I can move on. Fire report. I'll go to Counselor Thompson.
For this month, Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue had a total of 16 calls. With this latest power outage, I'd like to thank everyone for working together, from welfare checks to heating different houses, to manning the fire stations through the power outage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Thompson. Any questions on that? If not, we'll move on to the, what's the next one? Public works, Counselor McQuarrie.
I'd like to submit the reports as written there, and thank you to the, all the workers for all the work they did over the clumsy weather and conditions that we had.
Great, great, thank you. Any questions on that? Counselor Dedrick.
It's for the St. George Public Works Report. It says underwater that there is an ongoing issue with well six. There's an unusual amount of magnesium in the water, it's causing the chlorine injector lance to clog up periodically. Is there anything that we can do to prevent this?
No, it's just that magnesium levels just are natural within the water table, so just monitoring them, you know, making sure that the diodes are cleaned, it's part of the regular maintenance, so it does sometimes happen, they do clog up, but usually try to catch it with maintenance.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Other committee reports tonight? Any other committee reports tonight?
I have one for recreation.
Counselor Hat.
So I first off want to say thank you to all the linesmen, MB Power guys, contractors, Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue, and obviously Eastern Charlotte staff, because I know this last week's been a busy and challenging week, and I know that it's been a difficult subject at times, but, I mean, by the end of the week and moving into Christmas, most people all have their power back, so, I mean, you gotta remember all these volunteers that were here doing wellness checks, most of them, you know, had families too that they were away from, so it's great and I appreciate that. But on the better note of, you know, lighter note before the big power outage, so fires in the month of December, so we've made it in December, that's 12 months of Eastern Charlotte, so we've been together now for 12 consecutive months as this team. November the 30th to December 30, we hosted our very first, as Eastern Charlotte kickoff of Christmas. It was something that I was very passionate about, of bringing back as being a recreation chair this year, and I also wanted to unite our community as one. I think it was greatly appreciated, all the help and staff that's been there, Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue helping with it, and the many volunteers that made this a great success. We began that with a tree lighting at the Day Adventure Center, we served hot chocolate and chocolate chip cookies that were from the kitchen restaurant, we purchased Christmas stuff, a teddy that the YMCA helped, children's stuff. On December 1st, there was live music here at the McAdavis Center, local musicians and Community Kitchen was here with a canteen. Saturday, we continued with a Christmas parade, which was very well attended. Both sides of the road were full, it was lovely to see all the kids' faces. We had 23 floats, and it was followed by Santa. On Saturday, December the 2nd, we began a Christmas market at the McAdavis Center in a breakfast canteen by Eastern Charlotte Community Kitchen. Saturday evening was a reverse parade, sponsored by Keys Building Supplies, which I want to say thank you for all the help that they've done with this reverse parade as well. There was 212 voters, Sunday, December the 3rd, we finished the weekend off with a skate with Santa and friends. The Grinch made an appearance as well as Sparky the Fire Dog. I would like to extend a huge thank you to CCM Towing and Recovery, without hesitation, assisted in bringing the Christmas tree, and most of all, bringing Santa into the parade for us. If you read the sign on CCM Truck, it said Saves Christmas, and I thank you, Mikey, for helping us. We do have one more event at the end of the year, and that would be before the last council meeting, obviously, get delayed, would have been the Christmas Eve that was in Blacks Harbor on Sunday. Santa will be arriving at the park, which he did, we went to the nursing home, handed out treats, and Santa was able to go and talk to the residents. And even if they were in the rooms, we still made sure that Santa made it to every one of the rooms to say Merry Christmas. Over the Christmas holidays, the Patrick Connor's Recreation Complex has many ice times for free skating, pucks for sticks, the times are posted on our Eastern Charlotte Parks rep page. And as 2023 comes to a close, I would like to thank you, say thank you, to Eastern Charlotte administration staff, Public Works, Recs Department, Fire Department, the volunteers, and everyone that have gone above in making this our first year a success. I also would like to thank every counselor that's at this table and the mayor, also being part of our team. This was our first year as Eastern Charlotte. Yes, has there been bumps and bruises? Yes. But have we done work on ball fields? Have we done work at arenas? Have we done work at many different basketball courts in different parks in the area? Yes, we have. And a lot of people don't realize that that has gone on, and we wouldn't have that without this team. So each one of you, I just want to say thank you, and we will continue to make improvements. Just remember, this was only year one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hat. That brings us to eight, which is the financial statement. I look for a motion to, did you want to talk about the financial statement? If not, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the financial report for November 2023. Counselor Lee. Second by Thompson, Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the, on the, on the motion? All those in favor of, to accept the financial report for November 2023 signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing unanimously. Nine is old business. Bylaw EC-10, planning fees bylaw. I look for a motion to accept the third and final reading by title only of bylaw EC-10, the planning fees bylaw. I need a motion for that. Counselor McKay.
I move that council accept the third and final reading by title only of bylaw EC-10, planning fees bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor McKay. Second by Counselor McQuarrie. Question or comment on the motion? Counselor Dedrick.
Do we have the rates on the, where on, where in our booklet is the rates?
Those would have been distributed.
Before?
Before, yeah.
Um, I was gonna say, so we are, like, they're proposing to make it, so St. George, for example, we currently pay $0 for zoning and, like, a zoning, rezoning permit, correct? Why don't we make all of Eastern Charlotte at the same rate as St. George, for example? Don't we already pay the service commission for these, for these fees?
Yeah, we do, and the revenue collected from the permits comes back to Eastern Charlotte, so it wouldn't stay with the service commission. This would be much like selling, like, a dog tag or anything like that.
But aren't we, like, double paying, though? Like, we're still paying, the residents are still paying, though? Does that make sense?
They would be, yes. They'd be paying for the services of the service commission to do the administrative duties, but there is a cost of departmenting. Having free, having everything free is just, you know, across the, if you look across what's happening across the country, there's few municipalities that are offering free zoning confirmations, there's always a cost associated with that. If not, you're just inundated with people making requests all the time for, you know, a zoning confirmation, so.
Okay.
You have to have some sort of a fee to, there is, there is some work that's entailed with it, but all that work is covered with our fees with the service commission, it just, again, would be any type of extra, extra revenue for the municipality.
And those fees are comparable to other municipalities?
Yep, so they're, that base that we have, like, the $100 for a zoning confirmation is much like what's happening with the, the other RRCs within RC 10.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of a third and final reading of EC-10 signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passing unanimously. I declare that the final reading of bylaw EC-10. Nine B is a Blacks Harbor bylaw Z.2.3, the amendment to the rural plan rezoning, PID number 15166721. That is the old village hall in Blacks Harbor, I believe. And, Larry?
Yeah, worship, just, we're looking to set a public hearing date so this, this rezoning application can be heard, and we're putting location for the Stella Maris in Blacks Harbor, which is the site of the rezoning, so the available date is January the 24th, at 6:30 in Blacks Harbor Stella Maris Hall.
Okay, I need a motion to set the date and location for the public hearing of bylaw Z.2.3, amendment to the rural plan, PID number 15166721, and I need a motion for that. Counselor Hat.
I'll move that council schedule a public hearing of objections to Blacks Harbor bylaw Z.2.3 amended to the rural plan on Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, at 6:30 PM, to be held at the Stella Maris Hall in Blacks Harbor.
Great. I need a second for that. Thank you, Counselor Titt. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passing unanimously. Okay. Nine C is surplus, is it?
E.
Surplus, that could be the next. Surplus assets. Look to council for a motion to adjust the minimum bid for the surplus items below to $100. Do you want to speak on that?
Yes, worship, so this, previously, we had set some minimum bid numbers, they were like $2,000 or $3,000 for some of the vehicles, so setting it at a minimum of $100 gives us the freedom to move it. We haven't had any interest with, with any of those units, and the few people that have had interest have said that, you know, they don't want to spend that type of money, so if we set it at $100, we'll go back out and put them, put them back out for, for any interested offers for these three items.
Okay, I need a motion for that. Counselor Thompson?
I move that council adjust minimum bid for the surplus items below $100.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I need a second, Deputy Mayor. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passing unanimously. Ten, new business. Let me know if I'm forgetting, and I got two different sheets here. Okay, we need a resolution of council to transfer.
Budget presentation?
Sure, go right ahead. Jason's going to do a budget presentation here.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this is the budget for 2024 for Eastern Charlotte. As Counselor Hat mentioned, this is just year two for, for Eastern Charlotte as we move into 2024. Many of the things that, that the fiscal budget of 2023, it really didn't share completely across the board, all of the expenses, so this would be, 2024 is, is really a step in that direction of, of properly sharing across the board all the subunits with many of the, the general government costs for the year, so it's not a full step, but it's, as we gradually make our way through the life of Eastern Charlotte and, and move ahead, so. So overall, we had assessment of 6 million, 673,216 and $300. It's basically a 9.8% increase over the previous year. Our full assessment is 740,152 and $250, so our overall full assessment, there's about an 8.69 increase over 2023. Our general government budget for 2024 is, is right now at 6,711 and 999, so that's a bit of an increase. Overall, when we look at assessments for, for the 2024 year, let's go next slide, there we go, we see basically an 8.69% increase overall with the assessments, as mentioned, as with our full assessments, so we did see some, there was some shifting of assessment numbers when we look at St. George Rural and, and Bonny River, and really what that was, there were some properties that were in, in the, this, the former LSD of St. George that were really supposed to have been allocated under Second Falls and Bonny River. This happened really, 2022 to 2023, we, we saw a little of this before when it went the other way, and now it's gone back, so we've, I've had a number of different conversations with the province, and this is where it's settling in, so it's just something to watch for the, for the next year, if suddenly we flip back, those properties back into the rural area and out of Second Falls, then I think there's probably additional questions that will have to be asked, but, I mean, overall, we did see an increase through Eastern Charlotte of, in our, in our full assessments. So when we look at the community funding and equalization grant, year over year, and we've just, we've, we've looked at what it was in 2022 and 2023 and, and 2024, so the 2022 is really accumulated total of the former village and former town, as well as the LSDs, partial, partial values of those LSDs, but if you see year over year, there is a, there is a decline. 2022 to 2023, we saw a 10% decline in, in the community fund, and then we saw another 33% decline from 2023 to 2024, so when you're looking at numbers of about $200,000, it's, it's a very significant loss to revenue for the municipality, and, you know, if we just do a comparison of 2022 to 2024, it's a 43% decline, so some of the contributing issues, I guess, with the decline is, is though, though we've been made into a rural community, we're still being calculated under the community fund as a rural community, and it's something that this council has requested from the province to be positioned back as, as a town. I know early with reform, many people didn't want us to be a town, they thought that we would, our taxes would go up. When you're calculated as a rural community and you lose value in the community fund, taxes have no other place but to go up to make up for the loss, so it's a very significant loss, you know, and really, we have to be concerned of what 2025 fiscal year would bring as well, so. So definitely not a great way to start things out with a loss of revenue. So for tax rates, I guess before we get into more tax rates, so we're looking at overall a total operation, I think I have the numbers here, just back there a little bit, just with our expenses of, of just over 6 million for general fund expenses. So we have to do, look at, we do have to look at how we're, how we're coming to that number. A variety of different things were, were shared this time around, the first 2023 year, that fiscal year, we, we didn't share everything completely, or the budget that was provided to us wasn't completely seeing all general fund being shared, and neither does 2024. We do see a significant amount of, of just general government cost, whether it's just, you know, general services being shared across the board, but we still have restrained doing a full share of the general, general fund. So overall, we do see, see an increase with the rural areas, we do see decreases with the former municipal areas, and this is something that, you know, just based on reform, we would see the sharing that would happen, places like the former town of St. George, the costs would be shared across the, the greater area, the same much with the village of Blacks Harbor. The reason why we don't see a significant decrease in, in the village of Blacks Harbor is just their assessment compared to the town of St. George is, is about 30% compared to the town of St. George, so we don't really see the, the larger decreases that we, we want, we want to see, so. But again, this is, the 2024 year would only show that we're sharing, you know, a portion of costs, not, not fully all the costs, so we're still seeing the former municipalities retaining some of the, some of the operating expenditures that we, that we've seen in the previous years, as, again, as we try to, to move towards a, across-the-board sharing of cost, so. So we go to the next slide. So I guess one, one thing with this, this slide here does sort of show, you know, where all the different subunits are compared to the former municipalities, and we start to see that when we start adding on the 41 cents for roads and pretty much 30 cents for services provided by the province, we start to see that, you know, there is, there's a bit of a, a lot of the outside areas are all starting to look around $1.10 for an outside rate. And we start to see that, you know, between Blacks Harbor and St. George, there is still, there's still quite a few cents between the two of them, but as, as the years go on, that, that's, that as well should start to, should start to come together and be a little bit closer, but we start to, we do start to see that. The 41 cents, we, we do know that the province has said over and over that that should be closer to 81 cents, and, you know, as far as policing and animal control, as time goes on and we become a, you know, become a town, we will bring back a lot of the control of those services back to the municipality, such as policing and, and animal control. Excellent. So with our rates, under 2024, we've proposed to increase the industry, industrial and non-residential rate from 1.5 to 1.7. That was a, a big component of reform is the province allowing the local governments to, to determine what that rate would be, so it will bring additional $208,000 to the municipality, and under the 2024 budget, we have a lot of that earmarked for development, economic development for, for this region, so, you know, we're looking to sort of, I guess, utilize those funds to hopefully further increase our, our assessment as a municipality. Just, just some figures on costing for this year as well. I don't think it's anyone's surprise that, you know, we're seeing an increase of, of the overall tax rate year over year, but, you know, if you see what's happening with interest rates and just the cost of living, whether it's, you know, fuel and repair, all of these things go up. Our policing costs, oddly enough, in previous years as municipal, local municipalities, this is usually the larger issue, is our policing cost, but we're only seeing about a 3% increase, and so that's thankfully been holding steady across the board, but still, overall, we're, we're seeing a, a total policing cost for Eastern Charlotte just over 2.1 So fire costs, we, we knew that, as with many municipalities, we know that taking on the fire service would be, would see increase in cost, and we do see that, 2023 to 2024, there was a 25%, nearly 25% increase overall, so this saw that we, you know, what we're seeing in, in the 2024 year is a full merge of, of the fire services, we had three fire services with Eastern Charlotte, we also see full-time staff that sits there as well. with Eastern Charlotte. We also see full-time staff that sits there as well. So it was just additional equipment costs across the board with bringing up some of the local, the rural fire halls, bringing those up to sort of more of a municipal standard. So this was really overall, when we look, and again, the fire cost is a shared cost over Eastern Charlotte. So the full Eastern Charlotte does pay for the full fire service. So overall, yes, this is, that was the largest increase we see of all the departments within Eastern We did see an increase of 17% with just garbage collection. Again, this is one that, you know, where fire, we see an increase for next year. I think that's going to pretty much hold steady. If anything, I think over the next few years, we'll probably see that sort of flat line. But this should be a concern for residents is the collection of garbage. We continue to see this go up each and every year. So it is something that, you know, over the next year that we're going to look at how to combat this increase, 17.68% increase year over year. And we are starting to see that just for garbage collection alone, we're getting close to $600,000 just for collection of garbage.
Your worship. I was just wondering if Jason could explain why there's zero in Blacks because of our own garbage cost?
Yeah, so there is zero. There's no increase there. It's held steady. Blacks Harbor is the only subunit that offers municipal pickup. So we've been able to maintain the cost of garbage collection in Blacks Harbor. And, you know, we don't foresee any large increases over the next couple of years right away. So, you know, so that's one of the factors we'll look at in 2024, is whether we can extend that service into St. George. We do have to do something because this, in 2024 is the final year for all of these additional year contracts that we had with the contractor for pickup. So, you know, we're looking at trying to, at least try to stop a little bit of this increase. And one way to do that would be to introduce municipal pickup within St. George. But overall, if you look at some other areas like Penfield, you still see a 13% increase. It's Bonnie River, Second Falls, though the numbers are a little different, and still see a very large increase. So, yeah, it is something that in the new year in 2024, I'm meeting with other CAOs for this region, and we'll be looking at trying to look at options because it's something that we're all being faced with, with, you know, rising fuel costs and just repairs. However, what separates the municipality or the Service Commission from any type of contractor is we're not profit. So we don't worry about a bottom line for profits. So really, you know, we're trying, we just budget to break even, whereas any private contractors are also looking at a profit line, too. So landfill, so landfill would be, would be the Knoll, the Hemlock Knoll, yeah, a bit towards Lawrence Station. So that's operated by the Service Commission. So this is just a Service Commission cost as well, but very little increase there, 3%. It's pretty much held steady as well. So just so residents are aware that, you know, the garbage that's collected, we pay somebody, for the most part, to collect that garbage. It goes, it gets weighed at the landfill. There's a cost to bring it in into the landfill and dump in it. And so the less trash that we put into the landfill, the less weight and the less cost. So that's why we try to encourage people to please recycle. One thing in 2024 is recycling will change. Basically, circular materials will be taking over across the province. So we're interested to see, they should be coming online in about May. So we're interested to see what they'll do. We hope that they're a little bit more hands-on in promoting recycling and, you know, help to bring the overall trash that's going to the landfill down. And so, you know, that's something to be hopefully optimistic for because really, it was done by the Service Commission, the Blue Binns. There wasn't a whole lot of promotion for this, but this circular materials, this is going, this is their business. So we're looking forward to hopefully seeing some positive changes with our landfill weight. So the Regional Service Commission, pretty much rates have held when we compare it to the previous year. There's a lot of, a lot of new mandated services that came with reform. If we look at the Service Commission of a few years ago, we would see sort of a landfill, which would be the solid waste. We would see, you know, perhaps some cooperative or regional planning, and that would be about it. So we do see a number of new services that are mandated under reform. So overall, we're not seeing an increase year over year. It's holding, it's about 1%, but we're still paying 675,000 to the Service Commission for a lot of, a lot of different, different things that they're covering now. Again, these are mandated, and, you know, a lot of this is being passed down to the municipality with, you know, input from the board member, which would be our mayor. But outside of that, it is limited on what we can do there. So insurance is another, another big increase. I guess one thing to look at is, probably could have pulled the information was the 2022 when compared to, really, the information that we would have in 2022 would be the village of Blacks Harbor and the town of St. George. So we probably would only be looking at about $120,000. So now we're up to 230,000 plus. There is an increase there, 7.5% year over year. You know, we are though optimistic, we are looking at another option that a lot of municipalities across Canada, just starting here in New Brunswick, are starting to look into an insurance provider that's just, is really focused on municipalities. So this is something that really was a large cost increase in 2023. The province was self-insured, so when we took on a lot of new buildings, we took on three buildings, a park. There was an increase with covering those new municipal assets as well. So and it really is, as insurance companies, when they, when they do a renewal for us, when they look at Eastern Charlotte, they're not really familiar with us. It's maybe somebody in Toronto that is quoting us out, and we look to be a large town to them. You know, a municipality with four lagoons and six, you know, wells, a variety of vehicles, buildings, and really a municipal area that's 30 kilometers by 30 kilometers. So, you know, so that's what it gets priced out as. They don't realize that on the other side, that we're technically not a town, we're a rural community today. And for them, there's no difference with that. In the assets, the services we provide, we are considered to them to be a sort of a Canadian small to mid-sized town. So so insurance does continue to go up. Options are getting less and less. We look back at the former municipalities, you know, 20, 30 years ago, there was a large selection of insurance providers, even just your local insurance broker. Now it's down to nationally, maybe three providers that are focused on municipalities. So it becomes very limited. I always think of insurance as almost like fuel. They'll give us a price and say that it's increased, and it's something to do with the market in a very far-off area. You know, there could be the wildfires in Alberta are impacting our rates here. You know, it could be flooding that's going on in British Columbia. It's impacting our rates. So so really, it's a condition of right across the country of, you know, what our rate was going to look like. So, so, yeah, it's something that really we must have. But, you know, looking at options is certainly something we're going to explore in 2024. Just with animal control, something else, just very small, less than 1% overall increase, something that, that is right now sort of focused on by the minister in the outside areas. But in 2024, we'll look at bringing a bylaw with this municipality and hopefully be able to bring some of those numbers and bring that down because right now, they're all quoted out. They're all priced out individually for each of those subunits. So that's something else we're going to be looking at. So as far as, so as far as budget numbers, again, for this year, you know, we're looking for a warrant or tax revenue of 5,356,645. That will, that will make up what is needed for the 2024 budget. We do see increases with the tax subunits, as I've mentioned. Each of those subunits, again, we could have foreseen a larger increase in those subunits, but I think the budget that's been presented to council tonight, there are some, still some restraints on what is being shared. So it's something that we're going to have to just look at over multiple years and not jump into this. As I mentioned, the larger increases for the year would be in fire for 2024. I just, you know, though it's an increase for the 2024 year, I don't see overall in future years that getting much larger than that. I think that if anything, with the new fire chief, being able to share assets, being able to share equipment, you know, it was sort of something that we had to jump into to ensure that with one of our bylaws, that firefighters are adequately, adequately being given some sort of a reward for showing up. Certainly, it's a service that we all value. But that's, that is the budget presentation, worship.
Great. Yeah, what I'll do is, I'm going to back up a bit to the new business and the resolution of council, the transfer from the general operating fund to the general operating reserve fund. I need a motion on the floor to transfer $250,000 to general operating fund to the general operating reserve fund. Counselor Lee?
I move to transfer $250,000 from the general operating fund to the general operating reserve fund.
Great. Thank you. And second here for that would be Counselor McCain. Question or comment on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's passionate. B is that resolution of council to transfer from the utility operating fund to the utility operating reserve fund. And I need a motion to, I need a motion to transfer $5,500 from the utility operating fund to the utility operating reserve fund. Counselor Tipp? Second by Counselor, oh, Counselor Lee, great, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's passionate. Okay. Budget presentation, operating budget. Okay. What I need at this point is a motion. So is the motion is there before you to, for the general operating budget and warrant. So I need a motion for that. Counselor Lee, you want to read that?
Be resolved as per subsection 992 of the Local Governance Act, that the sum of $6,537,928.53 be the total revenue and expenses of the general operating budget of the municipality, that that sum of $5,356,644.53 be the warrant of the municipality for the 2024 year, and that the tax rate for the municipality be as follows. The council orders and directs the levying by the Minister of Environment and local government of said amount on real property liable to taxation under the Assessment Act within the municipality of Eastern Charlotte. Tax authority Beaver Harbor would have tax rate of .4158. Blacks Harbor, former village would have a tax rate of 1.4414. Fundy Bay will have a tax rate of 03973. Penfield tax rate would be .3789. St. George Rural, .3996. St. George Former Town, 1.2748. Second Falls, Bonnie River, .4035. St. Patrick, .3595. The council orders and directs by levying by the Minister of Environment and local government of said amount on real property liable to taxation under the Assessment Act within the municipality of Eastern Charlotte.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second here for that. Deputy Mayor, question or comment on the motion?
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Tipp.
Can we go back to the slide for our grants, please? So that's a decrease. My math is about $260,000. No matter what political spin or whatever, it's a decrease in our operating budget of $260,000. If we had that $260,000 to put in our budget, a lot of these tax rates would be a lot less, an increase what they are now. And that's the comment I would make on that. No matter what political spin, we're down $260,000.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Tipp. Any other questions or comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passionate. That brings us to the 10C111, the non-residential heavy industrial tax ratio. I need a motion for that tonight. Counselor Lee?
Be resolved as per subsection 992 of the Local Governance Act, that the non-resident heavy industrial tax ratio be 1.70 for the 2024 year.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second here for that. Counselor Thompson? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passionate. Okay. Utility budget, Blacks Harbor. I need a motion for that tonight. Counselor Hat?
Be resolved under subsection 1174 of the Local Governance Act, the sum of $500,019 and $587, and the total revenue expenses of the utility budget and water sewage operation for the village of, or the old village of Blacks Harbor for 2024 budget year.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second here for that. Counselor Tipp? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passionate. Utility budget for St. George, I need a motion on the floor for that. Counselor Dederaakis?
Be it resolved pursuant to subsection 1174 of the Local Governance Act, the sum of 800, 400, 800, 849,391 is the total revenue and expenses of the utility budget for the water and sewage operations for St. George for the 2024 year.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second here for that. Counselor Thompson? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passionate. 10CVI, water and sewage systems fee and charges for Blacks Harbor. I need a motion for that tonight. Counselor Hat?
Be it resolved per Village of Blacks Harbor bylaw number 92-59, Schedule A, water sewage rates. The yearly per unit charge of 2024 of water and sewage is follows. One unit of water and sewage is $496. A half a unit of water and sewage is 248. One unit of sewage only is 292. One unit of water only is 292.50. Half a unit of water and sewage only is 140, water or sewage, sorry, is $146.25.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second here for that. Counselor Thompson? Question or comment on the motion? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Hat.
I just want to make sure that we're going to continue with the, if you pay your bill on time, of the 15% discount. And I know it's not in this motion, but I would love for to see that opened up to St. George, too, if people pay their bills on time.
Yep. So those bylaws are still in effect for Blacks Harbor. So in 2024, much like the animal control, the water bylaw will be revised as well in 2024. So, yeah.
Okay. We have motion on the floor and second here. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passionate. That brings us to the water and sewage systems fees and charges for St. George. Counselor Dederaakis, would you like to do that?
Be it resolved per Town of St. George bylaw number 27-C, Schedule A, water and sewage treatment systems fee and charges. The yearly rate for 2024, Schedule A-2024, for water and sewage be as follows. Water, $377. Sewage, $169. Industrial water, $3.38. Industrial sewage, $3.38.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second here for that. Counselor Hat? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary, and that's passion and honestly. Policy 05-2023, municipal buildings and spaces. I need a motion to approve that policy. Yeah, Jason's going to speak on that.
Thank you, worship. So this is just Policy 05-2023. It's an external use of municipal buildings and spaces. This is just currently in draft form as well. So this policy has, just talks about the various municipal buildings and their use, especially when it comes to relating to the public use of public spaces.
Okay, I need a motion for that tonight. Good, yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I move that council approve and implement the policy 05-2023, municipal building and spaces.
We have a motion on the floor for Counselor Hat, seconded by Counselor Tipp. Question or comment on the motion? Counselor Dederaacus?
Does this need a public hearing, or is this just like, are we voting and it goes through immediately?
So this is just be a policy, not a bylaw.
So it'll be going into effect immediately, that's what you're saying? So what about for the tenant, people that are currently using the building? So we're going to issue them a letter? Is that what's going to happen?
If there's any changes, we would. Most of the long-term use that we have is already, they already have signed lease or license of occupation, so we wouldn't, they wouldn't be adjusted or anything. So when this policy was made, we took a look at a lot of our existing usage, made sure that there was really any conflict. So anytime there's a conflict, we'll certainly be reaching out to the users.
But all contracts that are existing, that we've already approved, are different than this.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of adopting the policy 05-2023, municipal buildings and spaces, signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passion and honestly. Correspondence tonight, I don't have those correspondence in front of me. Do you have those in front of you? Okay, we have from Fundy High School, we have, "Thank you so much for having us out to skate. We had the best time ever from the Fundy Middle High School Wellness Class." And this is signed by most of the class. I also have a letter here from, "Your kindness means so much." Thank you from David and Sheila. It's much appreciated. David Kerneth, I believe, yeah. Next is public presentation and appearances. Please note, under bylaw number EC-01, section 71, members of the public shall be entitled to address the council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. You have the opportunity to go there.
Raymond Hall, 108 Mount Pleasant Road. I've seen a lot of comments on Facebook lately. If people have issues or problems with the council, they should come to council meetings. I'm kind of tired of seeing foolishness on there about what this one or that one did or didn't do. Come here, have your five minutes, make a statement. Don't be rude or ignorant. Just do it. Make yourself informed, not ignorant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to? Okay, going once, twice, three times? At this point, it's number 13, a statement by a member of council. I'm going to go to the deputy mayor first.
I'd just like to, I guess everybody's been waiting for our ATV bylaw. We're waiting for the minister's approval before we can vote on it as part of the Off-Road Vehicle Act. My only ask is to hit your MLA hard and make her help us. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson? Counselor Hat? Counselor Dederaacus?
We're in a period where the government has cut our unconditional grants, and will continue cutting until they get us where they want us. It goes beyond us, and unfortunately, this gap leaves us with some hard choices of how to address it, either by cutting services or increasing taxes, and there isn't much left to cut. Beyond cutting our unconditional grants, the province has offloaded services that we were previously not paying. We are paying significant amounts to the Service Commission for economic development, tourism, public safety, and more. And it's not clear yet what our return on this will be. One of the priorities that this council and the mayor should consider in the upcoming year should be to take a pragmatic look at the value of our investment with the Service Commission and to see whether or not it's a viable expense on our taxpayers. Also, not Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'll see you guys in the new year.
Counselor McCrory? Counselor Lee? Counselor Tipp? Counselor McKay? That brings us to, date and location of the next regular meeting of councils, January the 17th, in three more weeks, 7:00 PM, right here at McAdavick, please. At this point, I'll look for a motion for adjournment. Counselor McKay? Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.